I'm going to call this meeting in order. This is a meeting of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees. Today's September 12, 2019. As I said, it's 2:00 p.m. This meeting is being held in the Aline Strain Community Room of the DAW Student Center located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas. To consider and act on the posted agenda, the first item on the agenda, as I've just finished, is to call the Lord's reception. Do you have the invitation? I'll ask Mr. Baker to get that.
I will. Please bow with me. As always, we approach another month and a brand-new semester. We're very thankful for the students you have brought to us. We're thankful for the activities. We're thankful for the learning and the scholarship that's happening here. And we pray that you will, your hand will be on all of that. Keep us safe, keep our students safe and the faculty and staff. Thank you for the board and the time that they have dedicated to this institution. And please be with them as a deliberation day. In your name we pray. Amen.
Stand with me and we'll go through the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second agenda on the agenda item is the open forum for individuals not on the agenda. Is this working?
Sure.
All right, thank you. Number three, President's Report. President Farmer, A, recognitions, B, employee notices, enrollment update, C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations. I would like to begin by recognizing Erin Davidson and our dynamic food service team. Erin, would you and any of your team members present today, please stand so that we can give you a round of applause?
(laughing).
I don't have to tell those of you present today what a fantastic job Erin and her team do in preparing our campus meals. Let me tell you, they make it very difficult not to overeat. So Erin, thank you for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations to Student Services and the 150th Celebration Steering Committee on Recent Back-to-School Activities. We recently had a fantastic 150th birthday party in front of Speaker Jim Wright Library, where the students devoured a giant birthday cake. All of our Welcome Week activities were both well-attended and well-received. As we begin the new academic year, I want to congratulate the Weatherford College Pi Chapter of Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society. The Pi Chapter of PTK is celebrating its 90th anniversary this year and is one of the oldest PTK chapters in the country. Congratulations, Phi Theta Kappa, and I think we have some board members here that are PTK people, so congratulations to you. Congratulations are also in order to Gwen Crabtree and the entire staff of the Weatherford College Testing Center. Our WC Testing Center was just officially recertified by the National College Testing Association. And finally, I want to share that we recently had a successful groundbreaking ceremony for the new surgical center at the Weatherford Parker County Animal Shelter. Our new Vet Tech program is moving along nicely, and we will begin accepting program applications in the spring. I might also add that we just received our first Vet Tech scholarship, so we're very proud of that program and the progress it's being made. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Nursing instructor Kristy Bowen has resigned effective 8/31. Enrollment Management Admission Specialist Rebecca Cooper has an effective date of 8/23/19, ending her employment. Our Business Office Controller Becky Depew has resigned with an effective date of 9/30. Assistant Rodeo Coach Tyler Gifford has resigned with an effective date of 8/6/2019. Fine Arts Instructor Cal Lewiston has announced his retirement with an effective date of 12/2019. Technology Services Computer AV Technician Paxton Metz has resigned with an effective date of 9/13. And Life Sciences Instructor and Department Chair Dr. Lisa Welch, effective end-of-employment date is 8/19/2019. We thank these team members for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment Update. Our official fall 2019 student enrollment for the entire Weatherford College system came in at 5,937 students, just below our enrollment management target of 6,000 students. A more detailed enrollment summary will be provided today during the Reports section of the agenda. While we have some homework to do regarding increasing student enrollment at our beautiful Wise County campus, we are overall pleased with our system-wide enrollment target outcomes. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer. We'll move to number four, Consent Agenda and Financial Reports. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and financial reports?
That's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I just didn't hear.
It's football season, right?
Yeah, probably so. Number five, Consideration Possible Action, TASB Policy Update 36. Rolinda Stone, thank you.
The college partners with TASB Policy Service to update both our legal and local policies, and TASB Policy Update 36 was approved by cabinet members at their August 13 meeting. And today, TASB Policy Update 36 is being presented to you all to review and approve. Erin, you have a question?
I was wondering why so many of them, it looks like it's correcting it to the exact same thing it was.
They say it's their formatting, their computer programming, the formatting, and it does that in several.
Yes. Yes.
So it's not a trick?
No, it's no trick.
Okay, that's my only question.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the Policy Update 36 to the TASB policies as presented today and explained by Ms. Stone?
That's a move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Number six, Consideration Possible Action Institutional Enrichment Fees. Have a pen.
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, this previous spring, we discussed with Board of Trustees a proposal to adjust the tuition transfers. The proposal specifically addressed funds normally transferred to assist student publications due to the fact that student publications had been inactive for many, many years. After discussion on how best to benefit multiple clubs, student organizations, and other programs, a decision to table that discussion resulted to allow the administration to develop a plan and come back. The administration examined total tuition transfers for the 1819 academic year, which went to cover expenses related to student athletics and student activities. This was approximated to be $745,000. However, the costs associated with these programs exceeds $1.1 million. Therefore, to assist in the cultivation of student programs campus-wide and to enrich the institution through campus improvements, the Weatherford College Administration recommends the creation of a student fee in offsetting these costs. A $10 per credit hour fee would generate roughly $1.1 million based on 1819 enrollments. Currently, only four community colleges do not charge student fees: Dallas County Community College, Tarrant County Community College, Central Texas, and Weatherford. Approval of this proposal would rank Weatherford College as the institution with the sixth lowest student fee among all 50 community colleges in Texas. After discussions with General Counsel Dan Curley, the recommendation is to utilize Texas Education Code Section 54.504, which grants the governing board authority to fix a rate of incidental fees to be paid to an institution under the governance by students. Therefore, Weatherford College Administration recommends the fee to be charged at a rate of $10 per credit hour for all students, titled Institutional Enrichment Fee, and be implemented for the spring 2020 term with the purpose of offsetting costs associated with student athletics, student events, student life events, fine arts productions, and campus improvements. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Is there any questions or comments by the board?
I do like that title. I would have used it as a euphemism example in the early days, but actually, it is good, I think, because it covers the territory in a professional way.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's not just another fee added, and to me, it explains the things that this money is going to provide for.
That is great.
Tell me more about that. What is that? It's a publication that goes out? What is it?
Student Publications. What was originally discussed in the spring was the transfer rate to cover yearbook and newspaper, which we're no longer in, which we no longer have at Weatherford College. And the discussion at that time was, well, how can we utilize those normally transfer funds to other programs? The recommendation was fine arts at that time, but we wanted to expand that to assist as many students as we possibly could, so.
Does that include the yearbook? Is that inside that?
That was the original proposal, but we no longer have a yearbook.
You don't have a yearbook.
No, sir.
We don't right now.
We don't.
We have someone who's working on it. When she finishes her master's. Okay.
So the athletic program, the people who go to the athletic program pay tickets to get in, none of that money goes to this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions concerning this agenda? I'm going to try to make a motion now. You correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir.
A motion would be that presented to Texas Education Code Section 54054, that Weatherford College fix an incidental fee of $10 per credit hour for funding purposes. Is that appropriate?
Yes, sir.
Will that get us passed legally here?
Yes.
He's not.
I think that would work. Thank you.
Do you want to add an effective date of January for implementation?
What effective date do you want on that?
January of 2020.
As of January of 2020, that would be. And we can cobble together what that says in writing. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move to the next agenda, which is seven reports. Guided Pathways Update, Mr. Indy. And since you have three in a row, then you can move to Demand Study Update and then to the Vet Tech Program Update in sequence.
Before we get started, I would like to announce that Weatherford College.
I apologize.
That's okay. Guided Pathways was accepted on September 2nd for the second round for the next three years, and we will be busy moving forward with that.
That's great.
We're excited.
Thank you so much.
And Mike's going to present today.
Yeah, hang on. Larry, do I need to go over there and start the PowerPoint? I'll get it working. All right, meanwhile, I'm running. That's as good as it gets, Doc.
Run while you can.
Okay. I'll make them go as quickly and painlessly as I can. We've been talking about pathways with you for about two years now, and pathways isn't going away. But pathways is a language that we use to talk in the institution and in the national dialogue about making it easier for students to complete their programs of study and be successful in college. It encompasses almost everything we do. For students, and we've been talking about this since last spring, Dr. Farmer and some of you attended some issues on numbers with harm and culture of caring, we're trying to clarify our language, and so we're going to be talking about creating a culture of caring at Weatherford College. I want you to understand that that blends in with our pathways activities, and we're still going to talk about pathways, but we're going to talk about it in hopefully more direct language with our students and amongst ourselves. So we've been changing lives here for about 150 years. Those pictures are just pictures of people I think we obviously see every once in a while.
If we could.
There's some good pictures there. There's some fine folks. And that history of the past 150 years points us toward the college we've been, which is an excellent institution, a caring institution. We often say WC means we care. But as we do that, we want to talk about what kind of college we're going to be moving forward and understand what our college is, who our college is, and especially who we are and our students are. So during in-service this past, it's kickoff meeting, this past August, we asked our faculty and staff, what makes an excellent college? And we used our new student response system that you helped us to get through baseline from the Campus Labs organization. And we got those responses. Shante Seber, our pathways specialist, put together a word map. The larger the word on the page, the more often it appeared in the responses from our faculty and our staff and our administrators. So you can see, I've highlighted a couple of words. What makes an excellent college to Weatherford College? Integrity is the number-one word, but also caring, student-centered, welcoming, excellence. That's who we think we need to be to be a quality institution. We then asked them, what are the biggest obstacles to our students' success? And I was surprised when I first saw this because two words popped out to me immediately. It says student and students. And that really bothered me when I saw it. I thought, are you telling me that the students are the problem here? I don't think that's what people meant. What they meant was students face obstacles that are personal to them. And if we look at the other highlighted words in gray, you'll see how often finances come up. Now, there are other important words here, there. There's no question of that, but finances come up a lot. And it starts to point to who is our Weatherford College student. In the past, we thought of students as being residential students taking 12 to 15 hours every fall and spring, completing in two years, and if they don't, we don't know what's going wrong. That's not our student. When we look at our student today, this is who our student is today. 65% are female, 62% are part-time, 52% are first-generation. But look at the employed and receiving financial aid. There's some crossover between them, but what those two numbers tell us is that most of our students are financially challenged in going to school. They are at risk because any event, a blown tire, a transmission going out, a medical bill, can take them from going to college to not attending their classes anymore. They are always on the brink, and that describes a lot of our students. You'll also see 44% are LTI liable and 52% are first-generation. These are great students, but most of them have no prior experience with the college environment, and some of them have developmental issues that they think means they aren't ready for college. So the overall message is, it's going to be expensive, you can't afford it, and you didn't belong here anyway. And we have got to change that message because that's our student. What do students say about Weatherford College? These are the people who come here. This one gets me every time I see it. To students, Weatherford is community, it's leadership, it's mentoring, it's success, but the most important word is home. For our students, we are home. For the students who don't have anywhere else to go, for the students for whom home is a difficult place, for the students for whom home is not hopeful, we are home. That is an incredible honor to lay upon us, but it's also an incredible responsibility. And I'm proud to say that so many people here do so many small things, things that we don't hear about, to make it that for our students, and we have got to do more. What we're going to talk about over the next several years in creating a culture of caring is eliminating barriers for our students. We are going to talk about data-informed, not data-driven, data-informed decisions. What does the data tell us about our institution and how we're performing? And the purpose of this is to accelerate student learning. That doesn't mean we're just going to shorten the semesters and go to all eight weeks or mini semester. It means getting them through and getting them finished and getting them on with their lives, into the workplace, into transfer curriculum, into whatever education is supposed to do for them. If you look at the chart, you see the culture of caring leads to success through all three of these things. If we eliminate barriers, we're going to see higher levels of success. But if we eliminate those barriers anecdotally and don't look at the data, we may eliminate it for one or two students and miss a whole lot of others. If we look only at the data and we don't think about accelerated learning, we may come up with really great plans for what we think we ought to do and not help students a bit. So this is about taking all the information available to us and making a commitment, a no-excuses commitment to student success. Our students are going to succeed because when we adopt a no-excuses mentality, when we love the students we have, and we use that word deliberately, this is an emotional commitment, it's an ethical commitment to the students, when we love the students that we have, not the ones we wish we had, the ones who are actually here, when we listen to them about what their challenges are, what defines success for them, when we understand their values and what it is that concerns them, we empower them to say, this is how you can succeed. We're helping you, but this is about your journey, and we invest, and this is the part where we must ask you to come on board absolutely because it's going to mean not only financial investment, but it's going to mean HR investment, it's going to mean investing in total. We believe that when we do these things, our students graduate. That's what we mean by our culture of caring. That's what we're going to be doing in pathways moving forward. If you look around the college today, you're going to find little tables with snacks on them, with Scantrons, with paper and with pens. In one place, it's called a rejuvenation station. In another one, it's called a student success center. And the students are going and taking the things that they need because sometimes not having a Scantron means I'm not going to go sit through that class and take that test. I'm embarrassed. I don't have a blue book, and I'm not getting stapled-together pieces of paper, so I'm not taking the test, and I don't pass literature class. A story that's touched me is that Shante, who works over in the academic center, takes care of feminine hygiene products because you'd be amazed how many students come in without toothpaste, shampoo, whatever they need. And she stocked that bin in the women's restroom. It was empty in the first two days that it was open. That didn't get me, I expected it. What she told me next is what got me. She said, Mike, we bought a bunch of stuff, and I went in to refill it, and there were different brands of products in there than the ones that I'd left there. You know what that tells us? That our students who need are the students who will give back, and that reflects national data, that students who need understand what it is to go needing. And what we have provided in our educational institution for those students is dignity. They had to take when they needed, and when they had it, they brought it back. And that student in need was able to contribute to the institution that they go to, and I don't know where we put that in a classroom by itself, that it's teaching as well as that barrel in that restroom. That's the culture of caring. We're doing it in lots of small ways. I encourage you to walk around the campus, all of the campuses, and see what we're doing. This is a loving college, it is a success-driven college, and we're going to put those two things together in our pathways moving forward. So that's the report on culture of caring. You ready to go to the next one? Yes. All right. We're going to go to the demand study. We've got some good numbers in here and some you may not like, but we're going to see what we can do about it. We're going to talk about efficiency data. Dr. Farmer informed you that overall, our enrollments are slightly down. That wasn't completely without, we were completely surprised by it. And as we were watching enrollments occur, we started to work on being more efficient. So if you look at the chart in front of you, the first one, college-wide enrollment, it shows you from the bottom up, our headcounts, our contact hours, our enrollments, and our credit hours. The top two bars we've added, these are the seats and the courses. And what we're trying to do is become more efficient. This is a non-contact hour funding year. We get funded every two-year cycles, so we're not getting paid more for having more people in seats right now. So for years, we've chased contact hour funding, and I think Dr. Farmer and Dr. Cantrell have made it clear to you that contact hour funding is decreasing, success point funding is increasing. We don't need to just get them in the door, we need to get them through and succeeding. So what we're looking at here is an overall decrease of 5.31% in the number of courses offered. That means less teachers teaching them, less spaces taking up for them. So while we had a decline in the number of students enrolled in the headcount, we've also decreased our operating costs. At WCWC, where we've had a drop-off of approximately 11 to 14% in the overall enrollment, we've decreased the number of classes by 19% while decreasing the number of seats by only 13%. What that tells us is, we had a lot of courses open with a lot of empty seats. And what we've gotten in being more efficient is, we've decreased the number of classes that we didn't need without cutting the number of seats that we did. So we're getting more people in fewer classes.
Yes.
Now, while the overall enrollment is down, and we're going to push to make that go back up, we're going to try to maintain this efficiency where we're offering the right mix of classes to the student population. Our next slide shows you dual credit, and I show that to you because dual credit is one of the most difficult areas for us to predict. We're dealing with 36 partner institutions, and they're telling us what they need in terms of courses and how many students they're going to put into them. So if you look at our chart, you'll see that dual credit is down somewhat, and we can talk about why. That's largely technical dual credit, and we expected it. But the number of seats actually went up. That has to do with our partners saying, we're going to need 40 people in this room, and there weren't 40 people filling the seats, but that's what they requested. Overall, we're down slightly in dual-credit courses. At Weatherford, where the bulk of our face-to-face classes are taught, you'll see that we're actually up slightly in contact hours. That's that little yellow bar at the bottom at .39, but we're down slightly in headcount. That reflects our turn toward workforce education at our Weatherford campus. Those courses, like OTM, PTA, that moved here this year, are high-contact hour but low-enrollment, low-headcount classes. So we expect to see the enrollments decline a little bit while we see the contact hours rise. Overall, we're down 4% in the number of courses offered, but 6% in the number of seats. That reflects the reduction in general education because those tend to be high-enrollment classes. Those are history, government, psychology, even our English Lit classes where the ratio is 30 to 1 for a faculty member. So hopefully, this is making sense to you and what we're doing to try to be more efficient so that when we pick up enrollment again, we're putting classes back into our schedule that makes sense both for our students' needs and economically for the institution. To better understand what those needs are, we're doing a student interest survey for scheduling this fall. We're going to ask them what classes they think they need, what times of day, what days of the week they'd be interested in them, what gets in the way. So we're going to try to use that student data to help us map our scheduling moving forward in our new colleague ERP. Next, we're going to show you this slide. This one's a little painful when we look at it initially, but I want to explain it to you. If you look at the top blue line, you can see that academic dual-credit enrollment is constantly rising. This has been going on for a decade, and it punched up when the Texas Legislature told us, that and our district partners, they're going to start counting dual-credit more. That was great. If you look at the lower line, you see technical dual-credit. Well, technical dual-credit for credit was something we didn't do much of early on. Then it got funded for the districts, and we started doing a lot of it. Then we charged them $10 per credit hour, and you can see the precipice drop. That would be bad in a contact hour funding year because those are a bunch of contact hours we lose, but this isn't a contact hour funding year. And we're paying the faculty members who teach those classes. We're paying them at zero tuition in the past, and it's all money out. Now, this is doing two things. We're not losing money on those classes as often. And the school districts are being more selective about which students they're putting into those classes. That's important because the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board, under its new president, are going to be looking at these programs because they specify the technical dual-credit has to be provided to students who have program completion intent. That means putting a student in one welding class or one pottery class isn't going That means putting a student in one welding class or one pottery class isn't going to cut it. They have to be completion intent. And so where large enrollments were occurring, some of them are coming back, and it's good for us, because it gets us away from an audit for over-enrolling students in courses for which they have no program completion intention. Hopefully that's clear. So while we see this drop, we're actually coming up in technical dual credit, and we expect it to grow again, but in concert with technical program completion. Finally, I'm going to show you something we do every year, we look at program performance data. Our program folks don't necessarily love this, but if you look on line three, you see one of our programs is highlighted in red because it's in the red. You look down the page, you can see another one that's at 58,399. That's underperforming right now in terms of finances. We are working with those programs deliberately to improve their performance and talking about how we get them close to revenue neutral, as close as we can. We're talking about how we're using personnel, increasing enrollments. The three areas of concern, if you can't read them clearly, and I apologize for that, are diagnostic medical sonography, human services provider, and slightly in the red is radiologic technology. The rest of them are in the black, and you can see the overall revenue generation from our general education programs and all of our credit hour programs excluding what we list as workforce at $7,265. This slide is workforce education. Last year, this was a very difficult slide for us, because we lost a lot of money in this area. It was the first time we'd asked the people in this area to look at these numbers in this way. It was shocking to them, they had a hard time with it, but they buckled down, and they've done remarkable work in this area. If you look, you can see that the top line, alternative teacher certification, is revenue negative at $81,393. Unfortunately, the program performed in this way over a period of over five years. Few students graduating, not that it wasn't valuable to the students who were involved, but in terms of its cost versus its generation, it wasn't sustainable, and we will close that program this year. It will close in August of 2020. If you look down the chart, you'll see $64,000 in truck driving. If you've looked at the news lately, you know that truck driving's been taking an awful turn in the last several months. 4,500 jobs in truck driving lost last month nationally. We have one or two major vendors that provide us students, and they have been down a little bit. We're looking at personnel costs if we need to, to reduce over the next several months with our faculty, so that we can bring that closer in line. Emergency Medical Technologies is in the red, but it's much better than it was. They've reduced their number of faculty by one-third, they're full-time faculty, and they're getting much closer. We also see an uptick in enrollment in that area. And Fire Science Academy, that is a very expensive program to run up, obviously, because we're sending people into simulated fire environments and live fire. We have an uptick in the student enrollment, and we're doing what we can to control costs. Overall, that area is $232,000 to the positive. We have work to do, but I think it's important to acknowledge, especially in the workforce area, the tremendous amount of work that Jeanette Cruz and her folks have done, especially as we're looking forward to new planning and new opportunities in workforce. You might have forgotten, but I'm not going to let you right now. They just got a National Science Foundation grant for $300,000 for automated industrial maintenance technology program. So they're doing a lot of good work in that area. Are there any questions about the demand study report at this point? Okay. I'm almost done. Thank you for your patience. Finally, we're going to do Vet Tech. As Dr. Farmer informed you, we had the groundbreaking ceremony for the surgical building on August 23rd, 2019. He attended that event. It was great. Dustin told me things are looking very positive down there. Unfortunately, the classroom building that we had planned has to be delayed right now because funding, they have funding for the surgical center and it's under process, but the classroom building is not. That's both a positive and a negative for us. Negative, we don't have the building. But positive, we don't have to worry about the instructional technology that was going to go into that building at about $130,000. So it saves us that money and that headache for right now. We're looking for fundraising efforts with the shelter. Dustin Deal has called me on that, and we're looking for opportunities, probably more concentrated after the 150th is over for Weatherford College. We don't want to put them on hold, but we've got a lot going on right now for our college. Dr. Garofalo has been named the Director of Veterinary Technician and Veterinary Assistant Programs. That's as of the fall semester this year. And as Dr. Farmer indicated, the Myrtle B and U.B. Forrest Scholarship, which was for veterinary assisting program, has been expanded to include veterinary technician student with the intention of taking onboard for our first fall cohort, a veterinary technician student for that with that scholarship. So things are looking very positive with that test. That concludes my report. Are there any questions at all? Thank you for your patience. Yes, Dr. Marlet?
This is a friendly question.
Okay. I'm a friendly guy, fire away.
Back up to, back up to the guided pathway.
Yes, sir.
And, um, there was a concern, the next slide back, and the next slide back. Finances, finances, money. I just wonder, this is a friendly question.
Sure.
How much of the institutional enrichment fee was discussed, these are the, that?
It was exactly in our cabinet discussion, and what we said was, we're going to look at the Pell Grant recipients and our students on financial aid, because if the institutional enrichment fees are going to cause a student, who would otherwise be able to come to school, not to be able to attend, we've got work to do. We are at that point where we're looking at other funding structures, not only our scholarship but our Pell Grants, to make sure we can help students through. And not part of this presentation, we're dealing with inclusive access initiatives so the textbook fees come down, and we are hopeful that we're going to lower the overall cost of participation at Weatherford College while implementing the institutional enrichment fee by decreasing the cost of textbooks and other ancillaries to get to school through alternate modalities like hybridized courses. Basically trading a tank full of gas for institutional enrichment. Bless you. Things that students can do to make this more social environment, a more interactive environment when they are here. But that is an excellent question, and it was absolutely on our minds when it came up in cabinet as we discussed this. Any other questions? Again, thank you for your time and attention.
That's far. Bye.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Finley, student success.
Part of the onboarding process for every new student is to attend a new student orientation. We offer the new student orientations really starting in mid-May and run through the end of August. At all three campuses, we had a total of 24 orientations, and they served 695 students this semester who attended the orientation. And we utilized the new baseline software offered through Campus Lab to survey their experiences about the onboarding process and attached in your board packet, our sample of a few of those questions. And I'd really like to highlight item number three that discusses the number of trips students come to campus to complete the enrollment process. A total of 68% students indicated that they attended Weatherford one to two times, which is much lower than the national average for most community colleges. Most reports would state, on the average, students attend a campus five to six times prior to completing the enrollment process. And this really speaks highly of our guided pathway initiatives, that we've looked at this past fall to really streamline our guided pathway, our onboarding processes. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment, that's impressive, because that means you're getting the job done.
Yes, ma'am.
And, oh, that's good.
Anything else?
No, Tom.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. RBC Capital Markets update, Dr. Cantrell and Mr. Matt Bowles.
We are moving forward with the advertising of our RFPs for architects for the nouveau tech building. With that in mind, we're kicking off the analyzing our financing scenarios, and so Matt Bowles with RBC Capital Markets is here with us today.
Bowles, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, sir.
And he's going to summarize the process for us and then talk about the financing scenarios for us. We included this in your board packet, if you had a chance to review those, but just going to turn it over to you.
All right. Thanks, Andrew. Members of the board and trustees, it's very nice to see you today. My name is Matt Bowles of RBC Capital Markets, and I've got a short presentation that I'll go through, understanding that you may have questions as we go through this. And before I get into the technicalities of it, I'll tell you at the end of the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about timing as it relates to what Andrew was talking about with respect to the process for architects. There is a method that we need to consider as we go through this. So what I've been asked to do a couple of times is to work with your administration on the formulation of a financing plan that would involve the issuance of revenue bonds. And we've done it a couple of times around different sizes, so the numbers that we're working with today are very preliminary, and as Andrew said, once you have an architect in-house and some plans, you'll better be able to understand the cost of the facility. But as we understand the basic construct of the facility today, the square footage and the cost for square footage, we developed a finance plan around $8.8 million, and that is the second bullet point on this particular page. And again, this is for the construction and equipping of a new facility for workforce training and planning at Weatherford College. We have some other assumptions embedded in this proposal here. One that I wanted to go through very quickly, this would assume that the college issues these bonds on its, essentially its own rating, which would, through bond insurance, be double A. The college's rating is A+, but we can possibly get some enhancement in the interest rate by getting insurance on the bonds. So we'll consider that as we get a little bit closer. This assumes all the usual covenants that are consistent with the bonds that we see other community college districts issue. I will tell you that given the current state of affairs in the economy and the bond market, it is a really, really good time to be considering a proposal like this. I recognize, it sounds very salesy, but it's very factual, I promise you. There's just a lot of data to support that, and interest rates are at an all-time low. So we considered three scenarios. The first scenario would involve a 20-year payback period, the second, a 25-year payback period, and then finally, the third, a 30-year payback period. And this assumes that all of these obligations would be sold in the spring, so this next spring of 2020. So we jump right into the preliminary results here with the first scenario of 20 years, and you can see on the, the next three pages will be consistent with one another, except that the payback period will extend five years for each of the different scenarios. This is the 20-year payback period on the right-hand side. You'll see that we have calculated debt service in the far-right-hand column of approximately $600,000 a year for 20 years. I want to just point out that we are using an interest rate that is about 40 basis points over market right now. We've got six or eight or 10 months before you could get to market, depending on how quickly the architect can work, so we've got a little cushion built in there. But the numbers wouldn't be all that different. This includes all the costs of issuing the bonds, reserve funds, the insurance that I spoke of earlier, and so forth and so on. And the second scenario is a 25-year payback period, and much might you expect, the payback on an annual basis goes down about $75,000 a year. You can look at the statistical data on the left-hand side. We're looking at a borrowing cost here of approximately 3.2%. The previous was about 3%. And then finally, the third scenario, approximately 3.35, 3.7%, it's about a $478,000 payment a year. And so one might ask two questions about your choice in different amortizations. The first question might be, how does this match up with the useful life of the asset? My understanding of the asset to be constructed is, it's a real bricks and mortar building that should have at least a useful life of 30 years, if not longer, I would suspect longer. So it's not uncommon for people or boards and administrations to match off the useful life of that asset with the amortization on the bonds. One of the theories being that as the students that are using it, or the community that is taking advantage of that facility, uses it for their training, it's spread out over a continuum and covers a broad swath of your population in time. The other is, taking advantage of long-term low rates of interest. And a presentation that I can make as we get closer to selling the bonds, I'll provide some very fine details around what the economic outlook is, how that translates into interest rates, but we feel very, very good about what the interest rate market might look like for the next 12 months. And by that, I mean, I believe that you will be at or near all-time lows in the tax-exempt market where you would issue. Of course, things can change, things do change, but that's how I feel about the interest rate paradigm as we look forward. So a couple of things to maybe consider as you go through your planning for this facility. We put this on one nice, clean page so that you can compare each of these, if that should be of interest to you, that's on this page, the 20, 25, and 30-year scenarios. And that concludes my remarks with respect to the presentation. So let me speak very briefly to timing. Assuming you have an architect onboard in the next couple of months, and they provide some information back to you that's indicative of a cost, without having a guaranteed maximum price cost for the project, you can generally work around that to develop a more definitive plan of finance and come back to you with a timetable that would include all of the different components of getting the bond sold. Once we get a number that is a GMP from a contractor, it generally takes us about 90 days. So if you had all of that wrapped up by the end of January, somewhere around that, I would say that you could have proceeds in your hands and start construction somewhere in the spring, March, April, somewhere in that timeframe. It, however, is not uncommon for a community college district to go ahead and start construction and reimburse themselves for expenditures once the board has approved the plan of finance. So it's not uncommon for a board to get started, let's say, in January or February, something like that, after the GMP is approved. So just a couple of different options there, things to consider. I'll be in touch with Andrew and your president, and I will be back to see you all as we get closer to the projects.
Okay. Any comments?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think I have any. Okay. I've got a couple of thoughts, but I think it'd probably be a good idea to move forward and get the information. Okay. Talk about some of those. Thank you all.
A lot of the information that we need would have to be in closed session anyway. Right.
Right. Dr. Cantrell, anything else? All right. Thank you, Mr. Bowles. We'll move to number eight, future agenda items or meetings. President Farmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next month, we will be bringing the access and affordability report, so you can look forward to that. That's all we have.
Number nine, announcements, Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir. As you can imagine, it's a very busy time of year. Tomorrow, we have our presidential luncheon, which will be a really upbeat, encouraging event that I encourage you all to come to. 11:30 tomorrow, President Farmer will have some remarks, we'll have a complimentary lunch for you, and I think you'll enjoy that. Hope to see you there. Constitution Day, we're actually having our Constitution Day over two days this year, the 16th, which is, I believe, a Monday and a Wednesday, the 18th. We have a panel at 8 o'clock on Monday, and then a faculty panel at 2 o'clock on Wednesday. If you'd like more information, we'll get that to you. We have some fine arts events cranking up. We have a children's theater production called Trees A Crowd. It's a touring theater show. It'll show here, and then it goes to various elementary schools around the area. It's an outreach program for fine arts. We do have our College Foundation Golf Tournament coming up on October the 3rd at the Canyon West Golf Club, and this year, for the first time, it's a morning tournament. It's a 9 o'clock start. We hope you all can join us for that. And then we have our sesquicentennial celebration continuing with Pioneer Week activities on October the 8th and the 9th. Watch your email for more information about that, and a Fall Jazz Concert on October the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Number 10, closed session. We've got it posted on A, B, and C, so we will close our open session in about two, three minutes to the window of closed session. We're turning. Thank you. Okay, I'll call the open meeting to order, and we will move to agenda item number 11, consideration possible action real priority. There's no action needed on any part of that item, so we will move to number 12, consideration possible action appointment employment evaluation. possible action appointment employment evaluation reassignment duties discipline dismiss public officer employed. We have nothing in that item either, so we will move forward to number 13. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I saw that.
Is there a second?
I was going to say a second.
All bayers say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.